Let's go in live.
Welcome and thank you for joining us tonight for the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education Candidates Forum. My name is Suzanne Apesato V. Workland and I am Scotch Plains Fanwood PTA Council President. The PTA Council is the host of this evening's event, which is being livestreamed through the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Ed YouTube channel. There are six Scotch Plains candidates running for three open Scotch Plains positions. We have Deborah Brody incumbent, we have T. John Mail, we have Dr. Karen Kolikowski incumbent, David Levine, excuse me, Dr. David Levine, Tanya Y. Williams incumbent, and Michael R. Gremmick, who is not present. There are no open Fanwood seats for 2021. All questions asked this evening were submitted by our Scotch Plains and Fanwood community members. Thank you to our moderator for this evening, Susan Ferris-Wright from the League of Women Voters. Ms. Wrights is a nonpartisan and out-of-town resource for this event. Thank you, and I will turn it over to you, Ms. Wrights.
Good evening. My name is Susan Ferris-Wright. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters for Berkeley Heights, New Providence, and Summit. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does a lot of hands-on work in the United States in order to safeguard democracy. We never endorse a candidate, but we are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our community strong. We have an event this evening sponsored by the Scotch Plains Fanwood PTA Council, and we have six candidates, five candidates can join us. One candidate has a statement that I'm going to read. The way this is going to work is that each candidate is going to have two minutes to give an opening statement. Then they're going to be asked a series of questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer the question. Each candidate will then have 30 seconds to respond or reply to what they think might be another way of thinking. And then at the end, each candidate will have a closing statement of two minutes. So let's get started because we have a lot of people that we want to hear from tonight. The first candidate that we're going to hear an opening statement from is David Levine. David? You need to unmute yourself. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Levine, and I'm a pediatrician in town. I am asking for your vote for the school board on November 2nd. I grew up in New Jersey and have lived in Scotch Plains for the last seven and a half years. I have two children, an eight-year-old, a seven-year-old son at Coles Elementary, and a four-year-old daughter at the JCC. Can't wait to be in the same school as our big brother someday. Last year, our board showed that it was not up to the challenge of our current times. Missteps followed missteps, miscommunication followed miscommunication. Change is clearly needed, and that is what I represent, all of my fellow challengers, Dr. Ma- Mr. Mail and Mr. Grom. Science, communication, and safety. That is what we offer. I represent the science part. In the short term, what that means is having someone on the board to speak to our district leaders regarding COVID and all the challenges it represents. To be able to understand the science and recommendations and explain it to the parents of our town. I will help guide our board in schools through these next few years as we move closer to normal together. In the longer term, my presence will serve the various needs of our children, be them physical or mental. I am committed to working with our educational leaders to get high school start times pushed back, which has been proven to improve teens' grades and mental health. I'll work with other board members on programs and initiatives to address the challenges of the social media saturated world on our children and support them with the tools that they need to navigate that landscape. Our children's education only begins at school. It continues representation. My fellow challengers and I pledge to be the difference our community and our schools deserve. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Karen Kolikowski.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Karen Kolikowski. I'm a dentist. I've been on the Board of Education. This is the end of my 12th year. I've been reelected four times. I have had my son go through School One and Park Middle School, as well as the Union County Votech High School. I have worked with different administrators in the district and seeing that the pandemic did not come with a guidebook or instructions. We did the best we could under the guidance of our governor, under the CDC guidelines, and our district physician. We are back open full-time, and I think we've achieved getting almost back to normal. Obviously, getting masks is another option, but that's a different topic to talk about. I'm looking forward to having you reelect me again so I can run the fifth turn to continue to serve the communities of Scotch Plains and Fanwood as I have been doing these last 21 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tanya Williams?
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the PTA and our technical team. My name is Tanya Williams, and I'm seeking reelection for my third term to the Scotch Plains Fanwood School District. I'm what you call a townie. I grew up here over 30 years ago when my parents moved us here from Westfield, and I had such a positive experience that I wanted the same for my children when I moved here as a single mom almost 20 years ago, moved back to the town. I currently serve on a few different committees on the Board of Ed facilities and also negotiations, as well as the newly formed Committee Wellness and Equity, which I'm most proud of. I also I'm a huge volunteer in the town. I volunteer for the baseball and basketball league, PTA, and I want to do all I can to ensure our children receive the best education possible to prepare them for a successful future. I also, it was unprecedented this last year and a half during the pandemic, but we did the best we could do, and we are still doing a lot of work. We have implemented an ventilation system in the school district. We have student assistance specialists in every elementary school now. So we are, we're working very hard to make sure that we have a positive school for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deborah Brody?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for all your hard work to put this together. I've been married 30 years. I've lived in Scotch Plains for about 32. Although I didn't grow up here, I feel like it's my home, and I really never want to leave here, and I hope my grandchildren come back here. I have four children from 25 to 32 years old, four boys and one girl. I had been involved with the PTA since my oldest was six years old. And with that, I served on multiple committees, too many to mention. I also served in leadership positions at Coles, Terrell, and the high school as president, and also did two terms as council president, working with two different superintendents. I've had a lot of experience dealing with the, with the school administrators and the leaders for many, many years. My work experience is that if I'm a finance person, I have an undergrad in accounting, a master's in accounting, a master's in management systems analysis. I've passed the CPA. I'm really a lifelong learner, which is, and I hope I'm an example for all the students in the school because that's one of our goals and our initiatives for all the kids. I, I work as a controller at a company, and I also run a consulting business. So I'm really pretty well-anchored with financial, financial issues. I have enjoyed the pleasure of serving as a board member and are very excited for all the upcoming initiatives that we have been able to put together. I am chair of a community relations committee, and we have a lot of work to do. It's been a hard role, but we've done a lot of work, and I'm proud of it so far. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a statement that I'm going to read from Michael Gromick. He could not be here this evening with us, so I'm just going to read you his statement. First of all, thank you for affording me this opportunity to get my messages across due to the fact I have a prior professional engagement that is not negotiable. I would like to take this opportunity to express my thoughts, although I am unable to be present tonight for the virtual candidates night. I am seeking a Board of Education position in order to enhance the progress that our current board has paved the way for. Myself, along with Tim Mail and David Levine, have a vested interest in our school system and decisions that impact our children. We all have children in the district, myself being a father of two daughters that have already benefited so much from their education attained within Scotch Plains. I believe that I can be of major help due to the fact that I am an active union member. I had the privilege of serving my local PBA as president for approximately 10 years and personally negotiated three public sector contracts. Due to the fact that the current teachers' union contract is up for negotiation in the near future, I believe I can bring a vast amount of knowledge and negotiating experience to the table. Transparency is more important than it ever has been. The public wants to have a thorough understanding of how decisions are made and what factors led to a specific decision. I believe in having subject matter experts weigh in on topics where their expertise and experience are invaluable. In our ever-changing society, school safety is of the utmost importance. Being a police officer for almost 18 years, I have attended many training seminars and conferences that could be useful in making our schools a safer place for our children to be worry-free and focus on learning. Given my role within my organization, I have had the opportunity to be in an atmosphere that pushes those around us to do better, to be better. Motivating those around us for the right reasons is an invaluable tool and skill that all great leaders must possess. We owe it to our children to demand the best we have to offer in our community for the position of school board member. I believe that Tim Mail, David Levine, and I are those people to continue to improve our current school board and offer different perspectives. Thank you for your time, and I wish the best to the other candidates. Okay, and last we're going to hear from John Mail.
Thank you and good evening. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I'm Timothy Mail. Many in the community know me by John. Over the last three school years, educators, students, and parents have had to change the way they teach the kids overnight, and this was no simple task. I do commend all those that were involved in the process. What I saw that made me want to get involved is the way that we communicated. Assignments, instructions, and new requirements were converted to email, Google Classrooms, and a variety of web-based applications. For many of us parents, this was an overwhelming amount of material to digest and remember. Thankfully, our board did recognize this and hired an outside consultant, but that first attempt was not successful. Given my professional career, I can be a great asset to this school board by helping them communicate more effectively and efficiently. I do believe that the acronym TLDR does hold true, which means Too Long Didn't Read. In written communications, we need to say what's important in the first two to three sentences, and all the rest can come after that. I've been a lifelong ambassador. You know, maybe this stems from the fact that my name is Timothy and I go by John from day one. You know, many times, both sides who are arguing actually are going for the same result in the end, but they fail to see that. I'm a level-headed, empathic leader that can help manage difficult decisions, conversations, and build trust in our community and dispel any false information. And you may ask how? Well, it's all about the communication. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with everyone tonight and look forward to this discussion.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. Okay, we're going to start. Again, I'm going to ask a question. I'm going to rotate the first person to answer. You get 60 seconds to answer the question, and there'll be a 30-second rebuttal if needed. Okay, so let's start, let's get started here. Okay, question number one. We're going to start with David Levine, and the question is this. What is your position on diversity training and initiatives for our educators and students? What is your position on diversity training and initiatives for our educators and students? David Levine?
I think that no one ever fails a child by learning more about the differences between us. We can't ignore these differences, and unfortunately, a lot of people unknowingly have biases that they don't always, that they're not always aware of. And I never have seen any issues with educating us on being more aware of the difference, of the differences in our community, different backgrounds of our community members. I think learning about these type of things is never a negative. It is not meant to distract or to condemn one group or another. It's just meant to understand our differences, that we can get along better, and we can grow together as a community.
Thank you. Okay, same question. Okay. What is your position on diversity training and initiative for our educators and students? Karen Kolikowski?
I agree that we should cover diverse topics. We have already had initiatives to have more inclusive literature in our media centers and school libraries. We've had donations from real parents and others to give us books and other learning materials to cover different cultures, different religions, different holidays. And it's true, as Dr. Levine said, we have to be open to learn about others that are not like ourselves, and it's good to have references in order to have inclusion so that more people know more things about others' cultures.
Okay, Tanya Williams? Same question. Your position on diversity training and initiatives for our educators and students?
Well, it's absolutely needed. There should be no reason why our staff and our teachers and our faculty should not understand about diversity and inclusion. Diversifying the staff is important so that students and people of color can see themselves in the staff and in leadership. That's all important.
Okay, Deborah Brody?
I believe that it's one of the most important initiatives we have because it has to do with the safety and the comfortability of all the students within the school district. If they are not, if those students don't feel safe, then they're not going to learn and achieve what they can, what they can achieve. So we've done a lot of work, more work in the last two years, three years than I think we've ever done, and, and we're continuing that work. So I think it's one of the, one of the most important things that we need to continue.
Okay, does anyone want to rebut anybody's answer? John Mail?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We just skipped over me, so I'll, I'll give my response there. Definitely think it is very important to have this type of training. I would be careful with the way the question's asked because it said students as well. I believe that diversity, inclusion, and quality training should be really for teachers and staff and not directly for the students. You know, we recently had some heated discussion in board meetings in this district about this topic. And while I 100% think that it's one of the most important things, I believe I also get 60 seconds because this is not a rebuttal. I think we should be very, very careful in who we choose because I think that was a core issue we had with some of the conversations surrounding our district. Who is actually doing the teaching and what their history is?
Okay, thank you. Now, there you go. Anyone have a rebuttal to any of those? No? Okay. Next question. We're going to start with Karen. Karen Kolikowski, answer first. Okay, how can the school district allow better transparency, communication, and cooperation between administrators and families to allow for a more inclusive working environment? How can the school district allow better transparency, communication, and cooperation between administrators and families to allow for a more inclusive working environment? Karen Kolikowski?
Okay, at this time, Dr. Mass has been sending out weekly information if there are any COVID outbreaks. We've started a Facebook page. It's the new school year, so we've already had our faculty meetings with parents for the middle schools and high school already. I believe the elementary schools are upcoming. We are being more transparent. We are going through strategic planning, and it is at that time that parents should come out and give their opinion as to how they want to be communicated with. Some like Facebook, some prefer emails, some would like a display on the, on the website of the district. And sometimes people say that the website is a little convoluted. Instead of just getting information for the whole district, you have to search it out at each level of the schools, depending if it's elementary, middle, or high school. But I feel that we are improving our communications, and we have done so especially over this last year with the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tanya Williams?
Thank you. So just recently, we hired a community relations expert who has been guiding us on the best way to communicate out to our stakeholders as well as our faculty. We've also created the social media, our Twitter handle, our Facebook, and we also have a newsletter in progress because we understand that not everyone is on Facebook or social media. So we have to recognize that there are other avenues to get the information out, and we also understand that transparency is very important.
Okay, Deborah Brody?
We have made great strides in, in what Karen and Tanya said, within the social media presence and using Twitter, Facebook. We do have a newsletter coming out. One of the, one of the very important initiatives that we're looking to do and is addressing the consistency of the communication between the school administration to the students and the, each, you know, the parents within each school. We want to make that more consistent between all the schools. So now, so all this, all this parents through the district all feel the same type of transparent communication. We have more improvements coming. We did have a consultant help us with questionnaire. We took that information. We're going to combine it with what we're going to learn with strategic planning, and then we're going to create a comprehensive communication strategic plan from there.
Thank you. John Mail?
Thank you. Number one is transparency. That, you know, discussions that the board has should be a little bit more transparent with the public. You know, we have these open public board meetings, and the public gets up, they ask a question, and they said, "Thank you for your comment." And there's not a lot of actual, real, valid conversation with the public. So that's number one. And number two is what you just heard is, is part of the problem. Facebook, Twitter, newsletter, website, email. No, it has to be a single form of communication. If we're going to communicate via email, do an email, and then you can copy that across multiple avenues. But don't send different information across different platforms for different reason. One form, short and sweet, link out to more information, and then you can replicate that across all platforms.
Thank you. Okay, and David Levine?
Well, first, I would agree with what John had said about just being consistent and having one uniform way of doing it on one platform without running the risks of miscommunication or missteps on one platform versus another. But I think as the pandemic starts to wane or as people become more comfortable in person, I think nothing really beats conversations that you can have one-on-one with people, things that cannot be communicated very well via electronic communications, whether that be Zooms or that be one-on-ones or just meetings with a board member to be able to ask questions or meetings with the district leaders to ask questions and actually have conversations.
Thank you. Okay, any rebuttals? Karen Kolikowski?
Yes, just rebutting what Mr. Mail said, that the open public comment, that there's no answers. Well, that's because it is an open public comment. It is that time for the public to say what they want to say. It is not a question and answer period. We are to allow the public to speak and not engage them in question and answer. That is why the superintendent or other administrator can be contacted directly for specific questions about specific things. And as for the multiple platforms, those were requested by various parents, Facebook, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay, rebuttal. Tanya Williams?
Thank you. The board acts as a whole, so they, we can't respond or sit one-to-one as board members. We are a group of people in a legal constituted meeting.
Rebutts. David Levine, sorry.
Yes, just two things. I believe one of the experts that was hired to do this was fired. So I don't know how well that went, but also I understand that from a legal standpoint, you cannot answer individually, but still having one-on, having the ability to speak to somebody who can listen to you and say, "I can get back to you," or "I can bring this to the board, and we will try to answer this at the next board meeting," still can go a long way.
Thank you. Okay, rebuttals. We have, okay, Deborah Brody?
There was a, Deborah, yeah, thank you. So there's a couple of things. The first is that the public is given an opportunity to sit and ask questions to the board members during a PTA-sponsored coffees with the board and coffees with the superintendent. Before COVID, they were held two times a year for the superintendent and one time a year for the board, and it was a very informal way to speak to the board. As Tanya said, we cannot sit one-on-one. We don't have any power alone, and we cannot speak for the board one-on-one with anyone. Secondly,
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, yeah, your hand was like behind your name, but yes, thank you. Go ahead.
John, no worries. Thank you. You know, we, we've designed these board meetings to be that way. That doesn't mean we can't change it. So we could change it. We could have more public comments, and, you know, we can just be more down-to-earth and more empathic with our community. And, and we can have a lot more than just one or two things a year, you know, where the public can talk to us. We should be open to conversation at all times. If we're running for a public position, we should be publicly available all the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next question. Okay, this is the next question, and we're going to start with Tanya Williams, and here's the question. Please speak to what your thoughts about the district's technology, both resources and programming, and what improvements, if any, you'd advocate for. Please speak to what your thoughts about the district's technology, both resources and programming, and what improvements, if any, you'd advocate for. Let's start with Tanya Williams.
Thank you. Well, technology is always a work in progress. It's also evolving. We were able to have one-to-one technology for our students, and they have an iPad or MacBook if they're in the high school, and that's their own property. And we also had training during the pandemic for our faculty and staff for Google and Google meets. But again, it's, it's all evolving, and it should be ongoing as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Deborah Brody?
We invested in the professional development for the students to learn, I mean, for the, excuse me, for the staff to learn Google Classroom to effectively be able to give lessons to the students during the pandemic. They, the professional development works in such a way that they are mentors for each other. So there is continual learning, and every year they do continual learning with that. The, the tech department is very cautious about making sure that they upgrade when they need to upgrade their equipment. It's like Tanya said, it's a constant, constant improvement and constant, it's constantly moving. So, so to say one thing needs to improve, it needs to be improved every year, all around, and as it will.
Thank you. Okay, John Mail?
I think this is a place where the district really shined, that we had one-to-one device distribution at the start of the pandemic, which was great. A couple areas of improvement. You know, for instance, we were asked to keep the devices over the summer, where I actually work with New York City School System to bring them all back, to actually physically clean them and clean the software off of them and then redistribute them. So that was a way to upgrade them and not ask the parents to manage a device. And also investing in training and cybersecurity. We had a DNS attacker with a certain type of attack that took our school network down during COVID for a couple of days. We have to invest in that security training, but really kudos at the technology team in our, in our district.
Thank you. Okay, and David Levine?
I, I see the technology as being two parts. There's the actual technology, and then there's the use of it and the understanding of how it can be used for good and for bad. So yes, I agree that the school district did a great job with distribution and helping the kids do the best that they could, given the educational circumstances. But I think we have to go even further with educating the children on the use of the technology for both ill and for good.
Okay, and Karen Kolikowski? Okay, and Karen Kolikowski?
The technology, again, was, uh, wonderful to give one-on-one district children a unit, so they had something at home during the pandemic. And yes, the professional development to train the trainers, each staff that was taught then taught other staff members, so that it is constantly being updated, so that they're constantly in use, and that the students were trained as best they could in that short time how to use them. Uh, the fact that they have their own piece of equipment for their four years while they were in middle school or high school was so that they didn't have to bring it back and forth, and they didn't have to worry about dropping it, and they didn't have to worry about getting a different computer, they had the same one, and they were all new. So they, they were not, uh, needing to be cleaned unless they added something to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any rebuttals on the technology question? No, we're good? Okay.
One.
Yeah, yes.
Just, just that, you know, I, you know, my daughter who went from elementary to, uh, middle school did have to swap her technology when she got into the new school. So it wasn't perfect, but I get the idea. Um, but you're asking parents to take responsibility of something they don't own, uh, for, you know, three months. I thought was different.
Okay. Anyone else rebuttal? No, we're good? Okay. Okay, next question. We're going to start with Deborah Brody. And the question is this. How will you use your voice and seat to help address the learning loss all kids experienced while they were virtual or out of school? Please be specific and give examples. How will you use your voice and seat to help address the learning loss all kids experienced while they were virtual or out of school? Be specific and give examples. Deborah Brody?
Um, given the fact I'm on the finance committee, I would use my seat there to help or give advice to the BA as to what programs or what other after-school assistance or such that the students would need in order to help them catch up with that learning loss, and also giving the staff the support they need to be able to, uh, to be able to, um, identify the learning loss in each of, with each of their students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, John Mail?
I think this is a great question. I would use my expertise in communication to allow parents a vehicle to let the school know, or allow teachers a vehicle to let the school know when a child needs to have intervention because of learning loss. So I'd use my seat to open up the ways that they could communicate and voice their, uh, reasons for asking that a child, uh, you know, be looked at for a developmental or some kind of learning loss that was identified.
Thank you. David Levine?
I think it's a mistake to think that there was learning loss in every child. Um, I think several kids actually did very well. Um, some actually did better than they had, than they had in class. So I think the question is too broad. In, in an individual level, um, if a child has suffered learning loss and they are behind, then, uh, if I was on the board, uh, as my expertise in pediatrics would, would attest, I would be able to, I would be willing to speak with and work with the counselors and the therapists in that school for that child and figure out what exact type of loss they had and how to best rectify that. Because all of this has to be individualized. Uh, there are kids, you, you can't generalize the answer to that question.
Okay, Karen Kolikowski?
Ms. Wright, if you please repeat the question, because I was bumped out when you read it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How will you use your voice and seat to help address the learning loss all kids experienced while they were virtual or out of school? Please be specific and give examples.
Thank you. Um, I don't think that there was a universal learning loss. I agree with Dr. Levine in that some students actually thrived learning from home on the computer rather than being distracted in a classroom. If there are students that feel they have had a learning loss or feel behind in their classes, by all means, I would support having tutorials either before school or after school, or additional help for those students in the various subjects that they may need. Thank you.
Thanks. And Tanya Williams?
Thank you. So a perfect example, I have two boys that are in the school system for the pandemic. One thrived being at home, one didn't do so well. So we can't say universal comment that all kids, um, suffered a learning loss. Um, being on the, being the chair of the Wellness and Equity Committee, we did, um, hire five student assistant specialists in the elementary schools to be able to support the kids and also support the parents. So parents need to let us know, let the schools know, when there's a problem with a child and they need extra help and they need more support. But, you know, classic example again was both of my boys, one thrived at home, the other one not so much, and we were able to get the support that he needed.
Thank you. Okay, any, any rebuttals? No. Okay. All right, next question, uh, starting this time with, uh, John Mail. Okay, um. Okay, this is a long question. I'm just going to tell you. Okay, it's, you'll see. Given the growth that Scotch Plains and Fanwood will have with the incoming communities at BoCraft and Parker, and considering the size of our schools, what is your plan and execution of the plan of the cost to increase the size of the schools? How to meet the needs of the student population? And how will you work with the township mayors to address the concern like traffic and taxes, et cetera, et cetera? Okay? I'll repeat it, just like, uh, I'll shorten it. Given the growth that the towns will have with the incoming communities of BoCraft and Parker, considering the size of our schools, what is your plan and execution of the plan of the cost to increase the size of the schools? How to meet the needs of the student population? And how will you work with the township mayors to address the concern, traffic, taxes, et cetera? So, John Mail?
Sure, thank you. I think increasing taxes is a last case. Um, obviously, there's, uh, our school is very, our school system is very financially stable. Um, so we have reserve funds that are set aside for, uh, any kind of, uh, you know, build-outs we need to do, not knowing the breadth and scope of that, what's specifically needed. Uh, we can increase busing, uh, to mitigate traffic issues, which, I, you know, I dropped off my kids this year, and the traffic is horrible going up and down Tarrell Road, so more buses, less cars. Um, and we should really, we should be very careful about seeking referendum and increasing taxes more than the 2% um, because that is a big reason, uh, that people get upset with, uh, the school system and the amount of taxes that goes towards the schools. So taxes is a last case resort for me.
Thank you. Okay, David Levine?
I think some of the parts of the question are a little outside the scope of the Board of Education. Uh, we don't control, uh, taxes and certain things, so we just have budgets. Uh, but I think as with some of the other questions, we don't know what the actual effect is going to be yet of these two. Yes, there might be an enormous influx, uh, but there might, there might be, it might attract people without families. I think we have to look and see what we have available to us in the schools. What are the likelihood and what's the possibility of expansion, um, what the effect is going to be? I don't think anybody wants to see classroom sizes ballooning. Um, that has an enormously adverse effect on the education that the kids are going to have. But I think this has, that is a, that's a, that's the entire board has to sit down and be able to speak about that and determine what the best outcome would be based on the influx that we may or may not see.
Thank you. Okay, Karen Kolikowski?
Thank you. Uh, we are planning to have the demographer start in a little more than a month to assess the situation. We are also looking at redistricting our schools because we are at capacity. We're either going to have to add on to the schools, or if there's room to build one, build a new school. Um, I believe that we will have more children coming in than the, uh, developers said that we would, because they all say they're going to be business people with no children, or some will have one. And you better bet people are going to come from other towns with more children because we have such a wonderful school district. I, I agree, uh, traffic is not in our purview, but we do meet with the town officials multiple times, uh, Dr. Mass meets with them to talk about, uh, things that go on that concern our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tanya Williams?
Yeah, so we, this is, this has been in discussion for a while about if the schools are going to be increasing. So we are looking to hire a demographer within a month and addressing the transportation, um, coming from across Route 22 where BoCraft was, and, um, you know, the traffic, so we are addressing that. And we have a shared service committee where we, uh, there's a, the Board of Ed works with the towns, so we all know what's going on and how we can best support each other.
Thank you. Deborah Brody?
So it's a hard question to answer because you don't really know, um, how many children are going to be coming and at what grades, because that's also would be an issue to do it well. The demographer, uh, will absolutely help us try to plan out what we need. My experience with the district over all these years is they've been very creative at figuring out ways to house the children without overcrowding them, such as the cottages at Tarrell. They were, it was an inexpensive solution, um, and it really helped out the population over there. So, um, basically, we'll have to find out what the demographer says and then make plans accordingly.
Okay. Any rebuttals? No, good. Okay. Next question. We're going to start with David Levine. Okay. If you are committed to working to ensure all students truly have equal opportunity, representation, and inclusion in our school district, what experience, education, and/or training have you had or will you get to not only understand our diverse student body, particularly the individuals whose identities and experiences differ from your own, but how to get them what they need? And then, but wait, there's more. Please note that diverse student body includes, but it's not limited to the race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion, spirituality, nation of origin, physical ability, socioeconomic status, family dynamic, previous educational experience, IEP slash 504 plan status, et cetera, of the students. I can reread as much or as little as you want. It's up to you.
I'll just give it a shot at this point.
Okay.
So I serve, I serve on the board of, uh, of a group called Postpartum Support International, uh, which works with new parents, um, dealing with postpartum mental illness. Uh, as part of that, I have served on professional and non-professional committees that have specifically looked at this, because what we realized in our board was we were mostly, we started off talking mostly to white families, uh, or people of higher socioeconomic status. And we realized we were not talking to all the families that needed to be spoken to. Not only did that mean, uh, by color, but also by religion, by, for veterans, for, for non-birth parents, men, um, uh, LGBTQ communities, BIPOC communities. And so I have a lot of experience working with and seeking out professionals that work best in those type of, uh, areas in order to educate a board and educate a population on the differences that exist. And that way, educational, education, and other systems can be put into place to address different communities and different needs.
Thank you. Okay, Karen Kolikowski. I can reread any or all of that question.
Please do. Please reread.
Okay. If you are committed to working to ensure all students truly have equal opportunity, representation, and inclusion in our school district, what experience, education, and/or training have you had or will you get to not only understand our diverse student body, particularly the individuals who identities and, whose identities and experiences differ from your own, but how to get them what they need? Please note that diverse student body includes, but is not limited to, the race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion, spirituality, nation of origin, physical ability, socioeconomic status, family dynamic, previous educational experience, IEP 504 plan status, et cetera, of the students.
Thank you. Um, uh, originally, I'm from Hudson County, specifically Jersey City, so I am used to and have had friends that are various ethnicities and sexual orientations. My son, uh, was a special needs student through the schools in Bayonne, and when we came here in Scotch Plains. So, uh, having a classified student, I've worked with various districts there. Obviously, we all can't know everything, and professional development, parent forums would be very helpful, not only for board members, but for parents. And I think we should be open to all. We, uh, agree that we would have diversity in the classrooms, so therefore, diversity amongst ourselves in order to provide this for our community would be in order. Thank you.
Thanks. Tanya Williams?
Thank you. Um, so strategic planning, um, a couple of years ago, one of the, um, plans on there was the Wellness and Equity, which I brought to Dr. Mass so that we can expand on that more. And we were able to, um, hire student assistant specialists through that. Um, we have a student assistant specialist for diversity and equity. Um, we have an art integration specialist so that all of our students, it gives, it gives them a non-traditional voice, um, increases engagement, and it's not just, um, just, not just for people of color, but as you indicated, for everyone to feel a sense of community.
Okay. Deborah Brody?
Um, my background includes people of, um, different sexual orientation and special needs students, but obviously, I wouldn't have been exposed to all of those different categories. I believe my job would be to, uh, gather professional developments. The New Jersey School Boards Association has that, Union County School Boards has, has, uh, professional development, and also just to be open and, and empathetic to be able to, uh, help any of those students. But I think some of the diversity training that we're doing is very important because it touches on a, a lot of those bases. It doesn't just touch on, um, a racial, racial issues. It touches on other issues as well. So that's.
Okay. And, uh, John Mail?
Thank you. Um, you know, number one is going to be, you know, being very empathic with those people and letting everyone know that there is, that they do have a voice, and that there's a means for them to communicate without punishment or without further harassment, or, so there's an amenity to it. Um, there's a transparent method that they can communicate, being very empathic to the way that, um, to the way that they want to communicate and the way they want to raise a subject. Uh, being someone in corporate America, I do DEI training. Um, not that I administer it, but I'm a recipient of DEI training. So, you know, while I might not be the most qualified person to speak about it, I, uh, you know, enter into every conversation or situation with a very open mind and a level playing field for all. So empathy, caring, and listening goes a long way.
Thank you. Any rebuttals on this? Okay, uh, next question. What steps do you feel the district should be taking to make sure the staff reflects the diversity of the students? What steps do you feel the district should be taking to make sure the staff reflects the diversity of the students? We start with Karen Kolikowski.
Thank you. Our HR department, under the direction of Peter Petuco, has been increasingly changing the areas where they look for applicants. They've been putting ads in different newspapers. They've been holding information sessions at the school in order to attract various types of individuals so that we can have a more diverse staff. And that goes for our teachers, our substitutes, our support staff, custodians, anybody that's going to be working in our district. Thank you.
Okay, Tanya Williams?
I mean, as Karen's, um, stated, um, Peter Petuco in our HR, HR department has not just looking in one place or, um, he's gone, we have a partnership with Kain, and we also, there's some numbers here on the diversity new hires. Um, there were a total of 865 new hires, um, and 26.6%, um, and that includes males in, um, 21, 22. So we're heading, we're still a lot of work to do, but we're heading in the right direction.
Deborah Brody?
This has been something that we've. This has been something that we've been working on for probably five or six years now. And, um, uh, Mr. Petuco has been changing the way he's doing his recruiting. He's going to different, uh, colleges as well and, and going to the job fairs at the colleges to try to, and, uh, attract, uh, different, a different like group of people to really more represent our, our students. We've been working on this a long time and recognize that it has been a problem.
Okay. John Mail.
Um, I would suggest using software to help track the metrics. We've run a campaign for a city agency in New York that has a very stereotypical workforce. And we've run a software application to recruit certain metrics of different, uh, races, religions, what have you for their recruitment efforts. So it's, it's using the tools that, that you have. And I also work with the Young Men's Initiative in New York City with the Department of Education to help them market, to bring more men of color into the teaching industry in New York City. So I would try to leverage some of the work we've done for New York City and our district.
And David Levine.
I, I don't have much to add, uh, since it sounds like most of, it sounds like the district is doing much of it. I think it comes down to non-traditional means of recruitment, um, looking for people who have a real interest in, uh, childhood education. Um, and might not come from that area, but be able to be trained and taught to achieve in these schools. Uh, obviously you want teachers, you don't want to just pull out an accountant and say, hey, do you want to teach? Uh, but I think that we, we have made many errors in the past and it's not just us of, of looking in the same place for the same type of, uh, of recruits. Uh, when we've missed out on a lot of great people who just came from more non-traditional backgrounds.
Okay. Any rebuttals? So we're good. Okay. Okay. Um. So basically we have two questions left. Okay. Here's the first one. And we're going to start this with, uh, Tanya Williams. What are the top two or three improvements slash challenges that need to be addressed in the school district? And how will you contribute to implementing these changes as a board member? What are the top two or three improvements slash challenges that need to be addressed in the school district? And how will you contribute to implementing these changes as a board member? Tanya Williams.
Thank you. Mental health should always be addressed in, in our schools with our, for our children as well as our staff and faculty. Um, our partnership with Rutgers has been positive. Also, we have, I'm sorry, we also have block scheduling in our high, high school, which has, um, been favorable for our kids, not focusing just on multiple classes, but one at a time. Also, I would say transportation opportunity in our schools. Where we are still busing kids from the, um, north side of town to Coles. I think that's an opportunity there so that kids can go to school in their own school district.
Okay. Okay. Deborah Brody.
We have a lot, it's still a lot of work to do. We've come a long way with the communications aspect. When I started on the board, our communications committee was really null and void. And when I came on, we, we restarted it and revamped it. It has come a long way since then. We have a lot of work to do. Um, but it is going in a great trajectory with, um, with, with a plan that we will have after the strategic plan. The other, the other thing that I think is we have a real issue with transportation and a shortage of bus drivers. And, and it has become an issue statewide where we have to maybe be a little creative as to how we transport some of the children to the school. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. And John Mail.
I think communication is, uh, number one area of improvement here because communications is the crux of many problems that we have as a society these days. Um, with the loads of misinformation, stereotypes. Uh, we need a, a single, consistent, strong voice as a communicator in our district to help inform everyone. Uh, mental health and wellbeing is, is has to be probably number one, uh, with everything as well. Where we have to, uh, you know, address any issues that were caused by the, the recent events um, over the past 18, 19 months, but continue to help people improve and be better, you know, be them, be their best selves. Uh, and then technology use and the security around that is definitely going to be a, something of much, much concern is we use more technology. We need to be able to safeguard our children from mal, or from, you know, maluse. Thank you.
Okay. And David Levine.
Sadly, I'm not going to be very original. Uh, so I believe mental health is, is number one, just as many have spoken about. Um, I think that, uh, there are many initiatives that are going on in the state and the American Academy of Pediatrics in New Jersey has also spearheaded, uh, to look at mental health, uh, school start times, which I mentioned, uh, for high schoolers, uh, to improve their mental wellbeing, um, sleep and grades. Uh, and also targeting all the way down to the youngest kids, uh, which, you know, so that they have a better understanding of how they're feeling, but also the ways that they can communicate this to their families, to their parents and to their teachers. I also think that just basic civics, um, as has been mentioned too with communication, misinformation, people yelling at each other and not listening to one another. Um, I think we have to get back to just teaching how to communicate and how to listen to one another and disagree. I think every, a diversity of opinions, um, has to also be accepted, whether we want to hear it or not. Um, and it can't be shouted down.
Thank you. Okay. And Karen Kulikowski.
Thank you. Uh, I think like, uh, Tanya Williams and Deb Brody had said, the busing and transportation issue, uh, due to the schools being at capacity. And if we redistrict and we can decrease the amount of busing, therefore our busing problem will be reduced because we have trouble finding qualified bus drivers. Even with hiring other companies, they just don't have enough drivers. Uh, the other thing is air conditioning. We have air conditioning fully in the high school and the middle schools, but not totally in the elementary school. So I'd like to see that be completed as my second project. Um, uh, so that everybody can enjoy a cool classroom and especially have the nice, fresh circulated air since we went through the process of upgrading all our UNIVENTS in all the schools during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any rebuttals? Yes. Tanya Williams.
Thank you. Um, on several occasions, Dr. Levine mentioned school start times, but that would affect, that's a, that's a statewide problem. That would affect our sports, our competitions. So I don't really know how that's going to be beneficial, um, with the start times.
Okay. Uh, rebuttal from David Levine.
So there are actually many, uh, projects currently in the works and have been successfully done in many school districts across the, across the state that have been able to move start times back, uh, and not have an enormous impact or undue impact on after-school activities, including sports.
Okay. Any other rebuttals from the other three candidates? No. Okay. Okay. Last question. Um, it's actually not redundant, I guess. Okay. What do you believe the top four priorities should be for the upcoming 22 to 25 strategic planning? And have you attended these sessions? What do you believe the top four priorities should be for the upcoming 2022 to 25 strategic planning? And have you attended these sessions? So we would start this, uh, round of questions with, uh, Deborah Brody.
Well, um, one of our, one, I would say that one of the first ones is communication and, and how to effectively do that to reach everyone in this school district and everyone in the community as well. It's not just the, the people who are in the school district. So that would be one. Uh, the, the financial condition of the, of the, the school district on an ongoing basis. Yes, we are very, very, um, secure at the moment, but, um, there's things that could happen down the road where we could have an influx of, 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 uh, students coming in from the new developments. And also if, uh, pre-K is mandated, we also will have another issue that we will have to deal with. So that, that would be, uh, two of the big ones. Um, continually keeping our children safe, um, with, um, the, keeping them healthy would be the other one. And, um,
Thank you.
I'm done. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, John, uh, John Mail.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I am currently attending the, uh, the planning. Sadly, I will have to be out of town for the next one next week, uh, but I fully intend to do the third, uh, session for that. Um, I'll be very brief. Five areas, communication, technology, diversity, security and wellness. Those are the five areas that I think are the core, um, for the next five.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, David Levine. Top four priorities for the upcoming 22, 25 strategic planning and have you attended these sessions?
Uh, I have not attended the first session, uh, but I will be attending the next ones. Uh, the top four, again, not going to be very, uh, original. The, the change in demographics that may be occurring with the new developments and everything that comes out of those. Uh, the communication within the district, uh, the technology changes, uh, both in terms of the physical technology and the effects of technology, um, and the mental health and wellness of the children, teachers of the district and staff of the district.
Okay. Karen Kulikowski.
Yes, we've had one strategic planning session, which I did participate. I plan to participate in the other two. Uh, my top three at this time, I have diversity, social, emotional learning and communications. Those are my top three at this time. And the rest of the strategic planning sessions will determine what all of our goals will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Tanya Williams.
I did attend the last strategic planning session and I plan on attending next week and the one after that. And my top three, of course, is communication, um, health and wellness and diversity hiring.
Okay. Uh, any rebuttals for that? Okay. All right. We are going to move on to our closing statements. And we're going to go in the reverse order. So hopefully I have this right. So I believe that we started out with David Levine. Is that correct? Okay. For opening statement, so we're going to go the other direction. We're going to start out with John Mail. Go ahead. Your closing statement, please.
Sure. Thank you. I'll be brief because we covered a lot of ground today. Uh, just want to really thank again the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and allowing us to speak. Um, looking forward to speaking with members of the public, uh, who might still be undecided before November 2nd or before whenever they want to vote because voting is, you know, open now if you're doing it by mail or taking advantage of early voting soon. Um, but I'm a committed father, uh, with two daughters in the district, one in elementary and one in middle school. I plan on being here until they graduate high school. I love the community. That's the reason I moved to this town. And I'm just a, I'm a committed father that wants to help the school district make informed decisions and communicate those empathically and transparently to the public. Uh, because that is how you build trust and that's how you run a community is, is trust and communication. So thank you to everyone. Thanks to the candidates as well. I wish everyone the best of luck come November 2nd.
Thank you. Deborah Brody.
So much work has been done over the past years and I'm proud to really be a part of it. Yes, we have work to do. Um, some of it is within our control and some of it's not. Um, and we have many challenges along the way as well. I am here only because I love these towns. We live in a really special place and I want to be able to continue our good work together. I make my decisions based on the best data in front of me and with all, all students and staff in mind. My only agenda is to be part of one of the best school districts in the state and continue with the initiatives we have set for ourselves and the community. So please consider re-electing me to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tanya Williams.
Thank you. I am so honored to be here tonight with all of you and it's been a really good, um, good time. I would like to be elect, re-elected to the Board of Ed for my third term. I have a lot of work still to be done. We have a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, recently I, um, recommended renaming Park Middle School to Malcolm E. Nettingham. Um, that's really a joy that we, our whole town will get to participate in on Veterans Day, November 11th. Um, also being on the facilities committee, I had the opportunity to make the suggestion for Friday Night Lights, which is another community centered event. I had the opportunity to go on Friday. Our kids, our community, it was wonderful. It, it was just a great event. I want to make sure that we ensure our district needs and our continued progress in wellness and equity. I want to continue to, um, be on the negotiations committee. I've had the opportunity to be on that committee for the past couple of terms and my added, um, insight will only be beneficial to that, um, to that committee as well as facilities, um, policy. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. We all have to do it together. We're all in this together. And I'm committed to being here as long as I need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Karen Kulikowski.
Thank you. Uh, for the past 12 years I've served on the board, I'd like to continue. So I hope when it's your turn to vote, you'll push my button or color in my box on your ballot. I, my son has already graduated from the district. However, I still care about all the children and the teachers and all the administrators that are here. I want everyone to have as good an opportunity as he had going forward. And that is why I continue to serve. I've lived in the community for 21 years and I have served either PTA, PTA Council or the Board of Education over all those years continuously. So I'd like to continue and I'm looking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And David Levine.
Uh, I want to thank, uh, again, the League of Women Voters for organizing tonight's forum. Uh, you've now heard from everybody, including the incumbents, and they have much to be proud of. Uh, the job we are all vying for is certainly not an easy one. Yet the fact remains that many in our town are frustrated by what they have seen and heard from the board over the last few years and some have lost faith in it. The COVID pandemic has been an enormous challenge, one that is not going away. After that, there will no doubt be other challenges and the failure of some of the board's responses has shown that the current membership is not up to that task. Therefore, it is time for change. We need people on the board that understand what is going on in our changing world, people that look forward and not backwards, new perspectives and new areas of expertise that match up with the challenges we are facing. My experience as a pediatrician will be invaluable to the board as we continue to tackle the pandemic and its physical and mental after effects. Myself, myself, Mr. Mail and Mr. Gromick represent the change this board requires, science, communication and safety. Now is the time to hold the board accountable for its missteps. My fellow challengers and I will bring transparency and accountability back to the board. We will work for the students and parents of our great town because we're our parents of current students in this great town, unlike several of the incumbents. We therefore have a vested interest in the district and will for years to come. Can an incumbent without kids in our schools really stay the same? We ask for your vote on Election Day, a vote for a better board that will work to maintain a bright future for all the students in Scotch Plains and Fanwood. Thank you and good, good luck to everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Before we, uh, close out, I, um, I'd like to remind, uh, voters that there are three different ways that they can vote in the upcoming general election. The first way that they can vote is by mail and everyone should have received a vote by mail ballot. The next way is that there is now what's called in-person early voting, which is, uh, actually very confusing to some people. So, um, beginning on October 23rd, which is a Saturday through Sunday, October 31st, there is going to be an opportunity to vote in person in Union County in a couple of different locations. Um, I looked online tonight to see if there was an actual building in your town of Fanwood or Scotch Plains and there isn't. There's one in Cranford, Elizabeth, New Providence, Plainfield, Raway, Roselle and Union Township. Those early voting opportunities are going to be in those communities for eight days from 10:00 in the morning until 8:00 o'clock at night. The idea is that you can go and you can vote there and you do not need to make an appointment. People, should help people to be able to work around work schedules, childcare schedules, just a lot of different opportunities for people that may have not ordinarily been able to vote on a singular voting day. The third way to vote is of course to vote on November 2nd at your traditional polling place. So you've got your vote by mail ballot, your in-person early voting and your polling place that you would traditionally have voted on Election Day pulls open from 6:00 to 8:00. And that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you to the. Polls open from 6:00 to 8:00. And that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you to the candidates and. Be sure to vote on November 2nd. Excellent. Good night.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.